... to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with due reason and justice for all.
Thank you. We're going to defer the Director's Report until the end of our agenda, so I just want to make you aware of upcoming meetings and activities. Next week, right here, we'll have the Board of Historic and Architectural Review Meeting, as well as Board of Zoning Appeals Meeting afterwards. Monday, July 28, Town Council Committee Meetings. Tuesday, August 5, the regular Town Council Meeting. And Tuesday, August 6, we'll meet here again for Planning Commission Meeting. So, mark your calendars. Next item is Public Comments. Nobody signed up for Public Comments? Okay. Any Planning Commission comments this evening? Okay. I like this. Keep the ball rolling. We have a long agenda. Item number five is Conditional Rezoning. Two SUPs and a Planning Commission Waiver for the Promontory Greenwood Homes care of Kent Henry is the applicant. Ms. Clary, do you have a staff report, please?
Yes, thank you. The applicant is seeking a conditional rezoning to the planned mixed-use development. This is to facilitate five commercial lots with a future commercial area, 120 single-family detached units, 78 villas, 40 townhouse units, which would be a maximum of 238 units in total with 27.51 acres of open space. It will be phased, starting with the commercial sites. The road beside Tractor Supply will be extended with a network of public roads connecting Cypress Run Drive and Turner Drive. The applicants have applied for the Conditional Official Zoning Map Amendment, which is the rezoning, for the proposed use of attached and detached units, fast food restaurant, car wash, restaurant, drive-in bank, which are all permissible in the PMUD district. These uses are also in line with the future land use map, with the current designations as residential mixed-use and corridor mixed-use, which provide for primary residential uses and primary mixed-commercial multifamily residential uses. The applicants have applied for a special use permit for drive-through facilities, to utilize them on all five commercial properties, with the current plan of a drive-in bank and fast food restaurant with a drive-through window. The second special use permit is for a waiver of yard requirements for reduced setback. The townhouse and villas will have an 18-foot front yard setback, 10 side, and 20 rear. The single-family dwellings will have a 20-foot front setback, 10-foot side yard setback, and a 20-foot rear yard setback. Finally, a Planning Commission waiver for the 50-foot buffer requirement reduced to a 30-foot buffer with landscaped screening. This 30-foot buffer would be applicable to 13 villa units and the four single-family dwellings towards the front of the property. The amenities will include the items on L-11 through L-15: signage, multipurpose lawns, grill area, waterfront deck, fishing outpost, plantings, seating nooks, totlock, open views to the lake, bike racks, pedestrian paths, picnic tables, fire feature with seating, woods bench, connection to the trail, tables, benches, chairs, and a sand beach. They will have a Property Owners Association that will be responsible for the maintenance and upkeep of the common areas and other amenities in the conceptual plan, and all stormwater management infrastructure. They are proffering the three following road improvements, which is the southbound right-turn lane as Public Road A, which is the entrance off 258 and Route 10, a southbound right-turn lane, and a conditional payment of $1 million towards the construction of the roundabout at Turner Drive. They are also proffering a conditional cash proffer to Isle of Wight County Schools if they are over enrollment capacity at Smithfield Middle School at the time of CO. And finally, no more than 60 zoning permits will be issued in a 12-month consecutive period for the residential units. This item did appear as a public hearing item at the May Planning Commission Meeting, and the 90-day time limit for the special use permit is set to expire on August 10. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Clary. Is there someone here on behalf of the applicant who'd like to speak? Please say your name and address for the record.
Kent Henry, Greenwood Homes, 3122 West Marshall Street, Richmond, Virginia.
Welcome, Mr. Henry.
Thank you for the time this evening, Commissioners and Councilman Cutler. I'm going to spin you through a quick slide deck noting some of the updates that we've made since our May presentation here at Planning Commission. Here is our general development plan that I'll flip back to in a second, once I talk through a couple of these updates. So, we went ahead and removed the density special use permit request on the attached product. We were able to achieve this by lowering our single-family detached housing by 11 units and then increasing our attached by 10 villas for a net of 1 loss unit to 238 overall. The additional area picked up by the villas in the attached product designation got us under that eight units an acre and allowed us to remove the special use permit. We revised the language, as Ms. Clary noted, on the zoning permit, to not allow for the rollover of zoning permits. The clock starts once the first zoning permit is issued, and then in that 12-month period, we have proffered no more than 60 permits. And if we do not use all 60, we do not get to carry those over into the next 12-month period. We did this to help better forecast impacts on schools as students are matriculating through the system. We've included a sanitary sewer stub for the Presbyterian Church. We went ahead and updated the language on the doc proffer to make it a little more restrictive, but allowing for us to build the amenities that are on our internal lake. There will be nothing on Cypress Creek. And then we also received the VDOT approval on our TIA consistency memo. And so, jumping back here, this is the general development plan. In this area right here, that I've highlighted as orange is where we switched out a couple of singles for those villas, which allowed us to remove that special use permit. Outside of that, the plan stayed consistent. We did not increase the amount of townhouses. And then, noting the special use permit requests, the drive-through on the commercial parcels, and then the waiver of yard requirements for reduced setbacks. And so, I have the townhouse lot typical here, which is showing the 18-front yard setback with a lead walk to public sidewalk, and then the 20-foot rear setback, which allows for the driveway at the rear of the towns with 10 feet on each side between buildings. I have a single-family typical lot, which is our, it's our 44-wide product that is 67-foot deep, and it's showing on some of those smaller lots how the single-family detached homes fit, which allow us to produce singles at a lower price point, as opposed to some of our larger lot situations. And if you look on the right, we have a single-family large lot situation, which is 205 in our Aspen, and you'll notice that we're well within the setbacks. You could actually fit up to a 60-foot wide home on that property, and then there is ample room in the rear for additional dwelling structures, pools for the purchasers to permit after the fact, if needed or requested. The waiver request that we talked through last time, which was beefing up the buffer behind those villas in that 30 feet, including landscaping, plantings for depth, a berm, and a fence, and then creating more space in the rear as we get closer to our neighbor's house that is approximately 300 feet from this property line here. Here is the updated zoning concept plan on the east side of the project, updated on the west. The phasing plan, commercial to be developed first, residential in five phases, and then noting the zoning permit restriction. The amenities have stayed consistent with our last submittal and presentation, so I'll flip through these quickly, and we can always come back to address any questions on the amenities if needed. Traffic plan, again, we received the VDOT approval on the TIA consistency memo that we submitted. Original TIA contemplated 262 units. We're down to 238. With the changing of single-family detached to attached, we have created less trips, actually. All the associated traffic improvements that are in that TIA are still proffered. We're maintaining four points of access throughout the site. We're still procuring these two acres here to tie into Turner Drive through the adjacent parcel and kind of complete that leg of the roundabout, as well as the conditional cash proffer payment for the roundabout. School impacts, again, we are down from 89 to 73 students. It was noted that Smithfield Middle would be over by 12 students, and we have proffered to address where we are over capacity at the time, if needed. And then fiscal impacts were updated a little bit. Expected cash flow unstabilizes 262 grand a year, with $1.8 million over the initial 10 years for Towne Smithfield, and then Isle of Wight, a little over $1 million a year, once stabilized, and then surplus revenue of 8.4 million over the initial 10-year period. Notable proffers, pattern book for architectural and landscape standards. Amenities are all proffered to match the conceptual plans in the pattern book. Construction of those two turn lanes, the conditional payment for the roundabout at Turner Drive, conditional payment to Isle of Wight County Schools, the updated commercial parcel, our commercial parcel developed first, residential development in five phases, and then the 60 zoning permits per year and no pier or docks on Cypress Creek. We have our renderings in pattern book setting exterior finishes in the community, and then some photos of existing product, and we'll open it up for questions, but those were the, the high level was removing the attached special use permit, and then working to restrict zoning permits for 60-year with no rollover, starting later in the process than when we originally proposed, tying into Hope Presbyterian Church for sewer, and I'll show you that real quick while we have it up. So, we are extending a sewer line here and a manhole that will be placed on their property for them to tie in and expand their parking, since they currently have a drain field there today. Happy to address any additional questions?
Great. Thank you, Mr. Henry. Any comments or questions from the Planning Commission?
Only question I have is the 12-month, he explained it as 12 months from the time he gets the first occupancy, so if he pulls his first occupancy permits March 1, 2026, then he would be March 1, 2027 for the new year. The way it reads in the staff report is it's 12 consecutive month period. I'm assuming if he wanted to limit his 60, you could delineate any month and count 60 from that point. So, for example, if he pulled 40 occupancy permits in August, you could therefore say, "We want to go August to August in order to limit 60." I'm just wondering, is it really just a calendar year, calendar year, from the first occupancy from that point forward, or is it really 12 consecutive months? Because you could change which month you want to use on him, because if he, if the market gets hot and he pulls a bunch of occupancy permits in the last quarter, then you may make him wait till the last quarter to pull more occupancy, maybe the following year. That doesn't seem fair to him. You see what I'm saying? You know, it should be a calendar year, not a consecutive month, to me, just for fairness.
Thank you for the suggestion. We did, as you note, wrote it as 12 consecutive month period. I guess, in my head, as we were doing that, say, we pull our first zoning permit in May of 2027, I was thinking that we had 60 permits that we could pull until May of 2028.
I would interpret it that way, too, but what the staff report reads is 12 consecutive month period for individual units, so I just want to...
With the proffers.
Okay. I'm fine with that. I just want to make sure we don't change the dates on it.
It says, "Upon issuance of the first zoning permit, for the first phase of the residential development on the property, there shall be no more than 60 zoning permits issued by the time of Smithfield for residential units developed on the property within the succeeding 12 consecutive, 12 consecutive month period, and in each successive 12 consecutive month period thereafter."
Okay.
So, the, maybe the staff, maybe it's not clear in the staff report, but I think it's clear in the proffers.
Okay. That's fine. I just want to make sure it's straight for him.
Does that address your concerns?
Yes.
Other questions or comments for this applicant?
Yes, I have one. In your conceptual drawing, the one that shows the commercial parcels, could you bring that back up, please? Particularly interested in number one, I think I brought this up in a previous presentation. The 40-foot buffer, you're in the ECO?
Correct.
The 40-foot buffer, on number one, there are about eight parking spaces incurred, you know, there's an incursion of these parking spaces there, and partially of the dumpster there. And is a dumpster permitted next to the highway in the ECO?
These would be addressed at site plan, once they've engineered their site plan, so we can verify that they comply with the ECO requirements.
So, we're not approving that layout? We're not approving that particular layout?
It would just have to be in substantial compliance with the conceptual plan, but they would need to comply with the requirements of the ECO, and that will come later.
So, this is...
Okay. So, we're not going to be intruding? I want to be clear.
Yes, we're not intruding. We're not asking for any variance on the commercial waivers. It'll be per code. You know, the trick with commercial is that, you know, we have some users that are interested and understand what their footprint would look like, but until we have them signed up and are in that site plan process, we don't know their final layout. So, these are our conceptuals that we pulled and put in here, but yes, it's noted that, you know, this would not be allowed, and we have plenty of space on the commercial parcels to accommodate the commercial uses. Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions, comments?
I have a few comments and some discussion before, it looks like we're being forced to a vote on this tonight. So, for starters, as I was reviewing this and preparing for the meeting, I went through and I just tried to figure out why, I appreciate the few changes and the hard work that you guys have done on this project, but I went back and looked at it, and I wanted to try to figure out why, and the first part was the zoning and changing the zoning, so I went back and looked at the land use map and the future land use map, and I was actually was, I was disappointed to see that, and I noted this during the election as well, that pretty much all the community conservation was gone from the future land use map. But then, when I went back, so I went to, bear with me for a sec, I went to the comprehensive plan, and I looked at what our citizens said, and I just want to share a couple of those Satisfaction level in the town, they're very satisfied with services, fire protection, police, parks and rec, tourism, less satisfied with planning, zoning, services, and garbage, maybe due to perceived quality of new development or the misalignment between the future land use map and zoning with the public's expectation. So, it was kind of an intro, as I was, as I was kind of sifting through, trying to figure out what the public's input was that would lead us to consider changing this from conservation to PMUD. Long-range priorities, there was, there was none of that. It was protecting natural resources, preserving historic resources, improving infrastructure, outdoor recreation spaces, public parks. And then I went to the comments that specifically, and I didn't, I didn't work on the, on this plan, but I think some members of this board did, and some consultants and some of the staff and town council members. But many of the quotes that they thought important to include, the very first one in the visioning process was, "I would love to see Smithfield businesses grow, not more housing." Second one is Chick-fil-A, so we all, we all know there's a desire for that.
Got to have rooftop to have a Chick-fil-A.
Well, there's trade-offs for everything. Then, I spoke with my children about the vision for Smithfield and wanted to share their thoughts. They want more green space, more parks, and more trails. They want better crosswalks, they want better schools and playgrounds, recreation opportunities. They see no value in building more houses. I told them that no one has ever said, "There are too many parks here," or "Too much open space." Please protect our spaces for people and the environment. And it goes on. You can, you could scroll on through there and see those. But then I, so then I went to the county survey. Granted, not all, all these folks are from the town, but 90%, more than 90% of the respondents are property owners in the county. Pretty satisfied with Isle of Wight, but what are they dissatisfied with? When they were asked about the number of variety of places to live, work, and shop in Isle of Wight, would you say more, about the same, or fewer of the following types of places? Almost unanimously, or certainly a large margin, about 70% said less apartments, about six, almost 70% said less townhomes, and so on and so forth, accessory dwelling units. And then, as you keep going, bear with me. And then, when you get to what other place, types of places would you like to see, schools, restaurants, stop growth, okay? Biggest issues facing Isle of Wight in the next five to 10 years? Not more than 90% of respondents, traffic. Almost 80% of respondents. Controlling amount of residential growth. Let's see, schools, almost 90%. Emergency services, almost 80%. If you go back into the word smatterings that they use and see what's blown up in the comprehensive plan, and in these, in these, in this study, you see that controlling growth is a big part of it. So, I think it's a little dismanned to, to consider changing the zoning altogether, but I certainly find that the plans, I think the capability of the builder is excellent. Their elevations look fine, but the plans are not in keeping with the town of Smithfield. I'll go through, I'm sorry, it's not my computer. Please bear with me. So, the yard requirements significantly reduced. In their package, they state that they are creating a community that is in keeping with the communities in Smithfield. This is not the case. Back to the comprehensive plan. If you look at the, the authors of that comprehensive plan, only two members of that team are still on the Town Council, and that is a function of the most recent election. And the things that are reflected in these citizens' comments are what were reflected in the election, and going to these kinds of setbacks and density on this property that used to be community conservation is not desired by the citizens. Now, we also have to think what's best for the town, and is some, is some housing best for the town? Well, we have countless homes going in at Mallory Scott, where we also did the same thing, where we changed community conservation to something that made it by right. So, that, and I'll quote a citizen that they said, "From Mallory Scott and the Grange," and the cottages kind of led into that a little bit, too, "that the citizens were put through the emotional wringer over growth over the last two years, and that's why the election results were such that they were." So, as we vote on this, I would, I would ask you to consider that in the setbacks, additionally the Planning Commission waiver, you know, I think it's hard for an adjacent property owner to look at a big piece of property and say, "That's going to be empty the whole time I live here." But certainly, a buffer that is there, that we designed to put there and made the rules to put there, should remain there. That 50-foot buffer, there's been, I don't think any agreement by any, any adjacent property owner to, that they would prefer a 30-foot buffer. However, in the package, the commercial is, is much desired, and if you go through the same process I went through with the, the surveys and the, in the comprehensive plan, you'll see that those things are desired, so I support that. But at this time, I don't support for the Planning Commission or the Town Council the waiver of yard requirements or the Planning Commission waiver, and I'm questionable on the rezoning, and I would ask you to consider those, because we are accountable to, I'm accountable through the election and appointees through the election as well, so I just would, I would really ask that you consider what the citizens have put forth in the election over the last year. It's nothing to do with the developer. They do a great product. It's nothing personal, but the, it is personal with our town and our citizens, and I don't think this is a good project for the town.
Thank you, Mr. Clary. Anyone else?
I'm sorry, and I have one more thing to add. I am in communication with the school board chairman as well. They have crafted a regulation that will go before the school board this month, and if it is put in place, we'll change our approach, we'll potentially, after legal review, change our approach and make our ability to demand proffers or make the, a developer's ability to pay proffers more accessible, hopefully.
Thank you. Other questions or comments for this applicant? Okay. Planning Commission discussion? Dr. Boat?
Well, I don't know. Do I need a rebuttal to what you said, Mr. Cutler, or do I just say, "Forget it," and we move on with the agenda and move on? But I personally think this is appropriate for what he's changed at this point. We've said it many times, the reason things are community conservation is because it gives us the most right to manipulate and help and hold the developer accountable. On the comprehensive plan, everything is community conservation, because it was put in that way in order to protect the, the town and protect our ability to develop those properties. So, to change that, they have to come forth. If we want more parks and recreations, then we need to buy the land and donate it into that leader. There's only been one group or entity that's been able to afford that kind of money, to be able to turn parks and recreation into what they are, otherwise we're not. The developers have been very responsible with their green space and parks, and if we look at Mallory Point, they recently donated 17 acres back to the town out of their development as green space to do whatever the town sees fit with it. So, they have 17 acres at the end of their development, and the Grange actually was generous in their donation of their green space back to the town as well. So, I think the developers have been very responsible to this point, two of the, you said the Grange, the Mallory Point, and, and then Battery, the Battery, and with the Battery decreased theirs from 150 to 103, 108, whatever it was. So, I don't, they didn't donate anything back to the town, but two of the three developers have been very generous with their developments. He certainly has created a lot of green space in here. He's complied. I don't see anything personally wrong with what he's doing at this point, and I think what he's presented to this stage and the way he's changed his development's been very appropriate.
I think two key things I would say about that. One, you said personally wrong. You don't see anything personally wrong with this development, but it's not about personal. It's about our zoning requirements, and even if we changed it, it is still not in accordance with our zoning requirements. And it goes back to, once again, we have a defined set of rules in this town that we use. We're certainly, in other instances, have used them as well and enforced them, and, but here we have, once again, a development that wants to exceed our zoning requirements that we've put in place for a reason, and that is to keep our town like it is, and yet, personally, we see nothing wrong with that. Personally, it looks beautiful. It'll look beautiful in Virginia Beach or Newport News, but it's not going to look beautiful in Smithfield. The neighborhood is too dense. It is not in keeping with our zoning, and I really am having trouble comprehending why this board that drafts the rules would continue to waiver the rules every time a developer requests it. The financial aspect of this development is not a huge boon to the town. It is factual, according to the VCU Land Use Education Program, that residential growth does not fund itself. It does not break even. So, again, I would encourage you to, to look at this and not say, "Personally, I like it," because it's not about your personal opinion.
It is about my personal opinion, because I've been elected to this board to give my opinion, and I will give my opinion. I don't represent the voting public, because they didn't vote me to this position, like you always said. I can have a personal opinion about this, and this is why I've been elected to this board, or appointed to this board.
Fair enough.
So, that's enough about that. They have... They have not exceeded density on this, so you can't say that they're over density on this project, because he doesn't have a special use permit for density. He's only asked for two. Sideline setback waivers, and that's it. The commercial drive-through's always going to be a special use permit on every commercial property that comes before us. So, he's really only asking for one special use permit. He's complied, and he's manipulated his development. And if you don't like the development, buy up all the land and sit on it as community conservation. He has a right, and he's come before us, and this seems very reasonable. And I personally think this is a very reasonable compromise. That that's, that's, that's the way it is. This is not based on emotion, as you said, back in February, in March. We should make informed decisions, educated decisions, not based off of motion. This is ridiculous. I can have an opinion, just like everybody else in here, and if I say it's personal, it is personal, because I think this is very appropriate, very commonsense school approach to what he's done with the land use.
Fair enough.
Thank you, gentlemen. Anyone else want to comment on this?
I would add.
Mr. Brown?
It's a compromise between the town and developers. Developers ask for a lot of things when they initially present a proposal. I seriously doubt it's true that they have gotten everything that they asked for. That is not true at all. They have not gotten everything they asked for. And it's Mr. Leeding to make it sound that way. It's Mr. Leeding. I can't remember one developer got everything that they wanted.
I have a question.
Ms. Smith?
Yes. Mr. Cutler, in the, in the citizen input, how many people replied? You have, you've touted the ninety percent want this and seventy-five percent. So, out of our population, our citizenry, how many people have offered their opinions? I think that's an important number to take into consideration.
So, in this survey, there were nine hundred and six respondents.
Okay. And our population, was that the county?
In the county.
And how many in the county do we have? Population?
Over forty thousand.
Over forty thousand.
Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, if you all are in agreement, we'll take each of these piece by piece. The first one is the conditional official zoning map amendment, the rezoning to PMUD. Discussion about that or motion?
I will see one other thing before we make a motion.
Mr. Brown?
I do agree with Councilman Cutler about the proffers and what the schools can do. Would it be proven for us to wait and see how that plays out?
What do you mean?
As far as the proffer's concerned, and this proposal, and future proposals, if we can get those, that assistance from the school, the county, to give us more leverage in what we can expect from proffers, wouldn't it be proven?
Mr. Brown?
I think we're on a bit of time constraint.
You, you, this, if you take no action tonight, then the, your time period for review runs out on August the tenth. August the eleventh or twelfth is your next planning commission, which means you will not be able to vote on this application, which means if you take no action, it goes to the town council with a recommendation for approval.
Yes.
All right?
I understand. I wasn't aware of the time.
With respect to the school system, cash proffers are voluntary. There is nothing the school system can do that allows the town of Smithfield or the county of Wight, Isle of Wight, to demand cash proffers. It is illegal.
Right.
Under no circumstances can we say, "We will not approve this unless you offer cash." Impossible. You know, to that, that point, though, the developer has proposed a cash proffer voluntarily in an amount equal to sixty-two thousand five hundred nineteen dollars per seat over the, the determined, the point where it exceeds the capacity.
Yes.
Which will be determined at such time as the, that need, that need comes back, as those units come online. There's a mechanism there. So, it's a contingent. The, we don't know what it's going to be. The problem is, the, the most recent data is that there is a declining school enrollment, all right? But with development in line, it would appear that there's probably going to be an increase. But to the point of capital expenditures, the county has not identified any projects in their capital improvement plan that, for which the, the county or the town can accept cash proffers, because you can only accept cash proffers for improvements that have identified and been approved in a, in a capital improvement plan. So, if he offered just a per-unit cash proffer tonight, we couldn't accept it. If he just said, "I'm going to give you a million dollars in cash proffers for schools", the town of Smithfield can't accept it, because the county does, has not, does not have a school identified in their capital improvement plans for which that money could be applied. So, you, you can't, you can't leverage. If you think you're going to leverage him, it's beyond the town's control to do that.
But, understood.
And I don't know what the school board is going to, what policy they're going to adopt, if they were, if they're going to do some planning and identify school needs and all that kind of stuff, that's a, great. Everybody's been, I think everybody in this room's been asking them to do that.
Absolutely.
Because, because we're looking at them for guidance on this, but to this point, I don't think they've done anything, not that I'm aware of, and we've been asking.
I think my understanding of that is that's what the county and the school board are working on to remedy that situation.
But we don't have the time.
Right. I mean, that, that's great, but until that's a reality, we can't.
To, to that point, though.
Accept any money towards a project.
This applicant has been sort of creative. He's given you a contingent proffer, which basically says, "If I can give you the money, I will." Based on the figure of sixty-two thousand five hundred twelve dollars per seat.
Yes, understood.
Not so much if he can get it, but if it's required.
If it's required, yes. But I mean, but it's, it's voluntary, though.
Yeah.
It's still voluntary, though.
Yeah.
It can't be required.
But if he tips the scale, then he's willing to.
If he tips the scale, he's saying, "I'm voluntarily offering a cash proffer if, at the time my project tips the scale, I will pay." And I don't know how, I don't know what else we can do.
But I think if the, if the policy was better, then he could, then a developer could offer a non-conditional cash proffer, correct?
You still can't accept it if there's not a project identified in CIP.
But if the pol, if the town, county, and the school board had the appropriate policy to allow them to offer school proffer that wasn't conditional.
It has nothing to do with policy, Mr. Cutler.
You can't require it regardless.
It has nothing to do with, that's state law. It has nothing to do with a policy. It has to do with their demonstrated need for a new school identified and included in a comprehensive plan. And until that's done, the county can't accept money, and the town can't accept money. It's not, there's no pol, they can't tweak any policies. There, that's, the, the General Assembly has set that policy very clearly.
Right. And you can't tweak the policy to require money, because that's currently illegal under state code.
It's entirely illegal.
But to be clear, stopping short of a new school, there's no other way? That the, the county and the school board could?
They have to identify.
Change their language?
They have to identify. Capital needs.
Capital needs can be anything plus a new school.
That's, that's.
Is that my understanding? Would that be my?
I don't know. That's up to the county and the school system to work out what their needs are. But they have to demonstrate those, and they're asked to, the school board has to identify them, and then they have to go to the county and ask the county to include that in their comprehensive plan.
But isn't that what Councilman Cutler's implying? That they're going to do that adjustment in, in the policies?
Maybe they're going to do some planning.
And, and policy or regulation?
But we, we can't rule a policy that doesn't exist.
No, no, we can't.
Yes, sir. Would you state your name and address for the record?
He's a lawyer.
Yeah, good evening. Tyler Rosé with Williams Mullen.
We won't hold that against you.
Yeah, exactly. I know Attorney Riddick's doing a great job. I just wanted to kind of clarify some of the cash proffer and the school situation. I think you guys have done a great job recapping. Just wanted to clarify that there's a cash proffer section to the Virginia Code, and then there's a separate provision that handles conditional rezoning related to residential development. So, the cash proffer size is exactly what Mr. Riddick is saying here with respect to the capital improvements plans, but that the, there are specific proffers and requirements related to residential development, related to onsite and offsite improvements. Offsite improvements include cash proffers related to residential, public facility impacts directly attributable to a residential development, right? So, that's why we're able to give these specific proffers related to our impacts on the Smithfield Middle School, but we're not able to give general cash proffers unrelated to our impacts on the project. So, that, just want to make sure we're kind of talk, there's, it's a very complicated area of law, and they broke it down very specifically. So, I just wanted to try to clarify here why we're able to give very specific proffers that are conditional to our particular impacts, but what Attorney Riddick is saying, related to cash proffers generally being illegal, that's kind of where the county would need to include that school in their capital improvements project. So, it's two related but similar situations. Hopefully, that clarifies the situation a little bit.
Thank you. We certainly don't want a UPL violation.
Yeah, exactly.
Thank you. Okay. So, the item for us currently is the rezoning to PMUD.
Well, since I'm in favor of this, I will make a motion that we allow, make a recommendation to town council for rezoning of the community conservation to PMUD for this particular development.
Second.
All right. There's been a motion and a second. Any discussion? Any further discussion? Ms. Clary, do you call for the vote, please? Mr. Brian?
We have no choice due to the time. Yes.
Mr. Cutler?
No.
Mr. Davidson?
Yes.
Dr. Pope?
Yes.
Vice Chair Smith?
Yes.
And Chairwoman Hilligas?
Yes.
Thank you. All right. The next item is our first special use permit, requesting flexibility to use light drive-through facilities in all five commercial parcels, current plan of drive-in bank and fast food restaurant with drive-through window.
Make a motion that we approve as presented.
Favorable recommendation.
Favorable recommendation, town council, as, as presented.
Second.
Okay. Ms. Clary, call for the vote, please? Mr. Davidson?
Yes.
Dr. Pope?
Yes.
Mr. Cutler?
Yes.
Mr. Brian?
Yes.
Vice Chair Smith?
Yes.
And Chairwoman Hilligas?
Yes.
Second special use permit is waiver of yard requirements for reduced setbacks with townhouse villa and single family. Any further discussion on this item? Chairwoman Tate, your motion?
I will make a motion to approve as presented, as it's appropriate for this. Well, I will make a recommendation to town council that we approve as presented for this particular development, since it seems very appropriate.
Is your second?
Second.
Good motion and a second. Ms. Clary, call for the question, please? Dr. Pope?
Yes.
Mr. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Cutler?
No.
Mr. Brian?
Yes.
Vice Chair Smith?
Yes.
And Chairwoman Hilligas?
Yes.
All right. Next item is planning commission waiver of the fifty-foot buffer requirements reduced to thirty with landscape screening. Only applicable to thirteen villa units and four single families for the front of the property. Any further discussion on this item? Is your motion?
I have a question before we, before the motion, please. Was there any discussion with the homeowner of that adjacent property?
Yes. We've been working with our neighbors, the Torrellers, for the last six months on defining this buffer, and have accommodated them with the request for not only a visual barrier with a berm and then depth of landscaping plannings, but also a physical barrier of a fence, which we've included. And then also making sure that we had ample room as we get back closer to their actual homestead, where the buffer increases to a hundred and nineteen feet, and we keep the buffer and, you know, common space on this hill that slopes down to them for, for the request. So, yes, there've been ongoing conversations with the neighbors.
Conversations, but they haven't spoken or in favor or against. And it doesn't sound like there's any certainty on that, the way you describe it.
That's correct. I mean, I think they've been very responsive, and they've given us some constructive feedback. We've flipped trails that, you know, originally bordered their property internal to keep people away. They had a request specifically for, for, you know, removal of a dock, or restrictions of docks on Cypress Creek, which was echoed by a lot of people, but we accommodated that. Again, we've been working with the neighbors, and they've seen this plan a couple of times now, and I'm not, I'm not, I don't want to speak for them. They certainly haven't given me anything in writing, but we have been working with them on this buffer now.
And I will give confirmation that what he said is accurate, as I've had discussions with the Torrellers.
I'm, I'm aware of discussions, but just no concurrence or anything of that nature.
My impression is they're not happy with the thirty-foot buffer, but understand that there's probably not much to give, but they've been beefing up the landscaping requirements, which they've asked for, and I think he's complied with.
And again, it's a, it's a give and take. Developer doesn't get everything he wants. It's a give or take. It's a negotiation. These applications are a negotiation between the developer and town officials, representatives on this commission and the town council. These applications are a negotiation. It's not an all-give and whatever you ask for. It doesn't happen. It doesn't happen that way.
Any further discussion on this item? Chairwoman Tate, your motion?
I'll make a motion that we recommend.
Approve.
Approve. Planning commission waiver for the fifty-foot buffer requirement.
Your second?
Second.
As presented, sorry.
Ms. Clary, call for the question, please? Mr. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Cutler?
No.
Mr. Brian?
Yes.
Dr. Pope?
Yes.
Vice Chair Smith?
Yes.
And Chairwoman Hilligas?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. Our next item is a public hearing, initial rezoning, three FUPs, special sign exception, and entrance corridor overlay. That's a lot for sheets. Ms. Clary, we have a staff report, please.
Yes, thank you. The applicant is seeking a conditional rezoning to highway retail commercial. This will facilitate the construction of a convenience store with fueling stations, along with two additional retail users. These uses are also in line with the future land use map for that corridor mixed use, which provides primary commercial uses. The six thousand one hundred thirty-nine square foot convenience store will feature a four thousand one hundred and seventy square foot fueling station canopy. It will have six double-sided self-serve fueling stations. In additional, in addition to the traditional convenience store offerings, there will be a made-to-order food menu, coffee bar, and smoothies. There will be indoor and outdoor seating. It will operate twenty-four hours a day, seven days per week. It does have existing access servicing the Sherwin-Williams, and will also include a write-in, write-out shared interest, entrance among the subdivided parcels. There will be a pedestrian path along Route Ten as well. The first special use permit is for a drive-through facility for the made-to-order food items or other food items from the store. Second special use permit is for a waiver of parking and loading. This would be to exceed the maximum number of parking spaces allowed by seven, providing up to forty-four spaces instead of the maximum of thirty-seven. The third special use permit is for the use of a service station to utilize one parcel as a five thousand five hundred square foot foil express facility. And also a special sign exception. This is because they are proposing two wall signs on one side of the building. They have a twenty-four-seven drive-through sign and a sheet sign, which does not front on a street. They also have three canopy signs that do not exceed the eighteen square feet in area. And finally, the auto diesel price sign exceeds three square feet. The building mountain signs are internally illuminated with white LEDs and backlit to provide the glow effect between the sign and the exterior building face. The made-to-order sign is externally illuminated by a light, a bar mountain above. The twenty-four-seven sign is internally illuminated with a white LED and an ACM pylon pole sign along the front edge of Ben's Church Boulevard. The canopy signs have a box area of about thirteen square feet and an outline area of almost twelve square feet. They also have entrance corridor overlay review, where the building will be a brick veneer with a cast stone sill, anchored cast iron masonry veneer, featuring regal red canopies, corner tower featuring standing seam metal roof in bright red. The roof equipment screened with dark bronze, and the decorative aluminum fence will also match in. match in dark bronze. The gas canopy will feature matching stone base, dark bronze accents, and a red canopy. VDOT comments were included in the application. However, this afternoon I have spoken with VDOT and they are okay if planning commission would like to make a recommendation contingent upon VDOT comments being addressed prior to town council.
Thank you. Thank you. This is a public hearing, so we'll open a public hearing. Does anyone sign up to speak?
No.
Okay. Anyone want to speak at this time? That's not the applicant. Okay, then we'll close. And now we hear from the applicant.
Thank you, Chair Hillgas, Vice Chair Smith. My name's Randy Royal with Kimling Horn and Associates, business address 4525 Main Street, Virginia Beach. I'm here to represent this project. As Tammy said, we're requesting a highway commercial. Mark, can you pull up the site plan, please? You got that? Tammy has mentioned the special use permits and the signage, so I won't go through those again, but I kind of want to talk about the layout a little bit if we can get that up there.
Give me a few minutes.
All right, then I'll go to the rest of it. For the turn lane, which is off-site to the, it's in front of the Sherwin-Williams, we believe we have a deal with the owner to get the off-site right-of-way. We are going to put the multipurpose trail in with it. The question will be if we can get the full 200 by 200 in there because I believe we're going to hit some wetlands in the ditch, but we'll get that worked out with VDOT, as we will the other minor items in the study. We basically discussed everything as far as improvements right now. So our proffers include, well, Mark's going to get it up in a minute, we've got a write-in, write-out on the far end of the property, which will serve as future access for the adjacent property. I want to talk about that a little more. We've got a proffer for cost participating and off-site improvements, the roundabout that's across the road from us, cost participating in utilities, sewer and water to serve the site. Town's studying that right now to determine how to serve our site and this entire unserved area, how best to do it. We'll pay our fair share for that. Believe we've done everything the town has requested and VDOT, and we've got proffers for that. As Tammy said, we'll work out the details of the VDOT study before we get to town council and that's just tweak this a little bit, tweak that, but there's not going to be any additional improvements, I don't believe. We're meeting what you want per the future land use plan and from what I've seen, we've got a positive staff report. I don't believe we have any opposition and was going to wind up there, but now we've got the site up there, so good. So as you can see, we've got the write-in, write-out at the far end of the property with the drive extended to the back. That's to serve the adjacent property, the property behind it to share the access. We've similarly got the drive on the right side that goes to the back of the property. As I talked about before, I don't know if you can see it there or not, we've got a dash line at the back. That's an additional access from the adjacent property that can come around down that drive and access the traffic signal there. We've got a cross connection at the front between the sheets, the other, other two users in there, and it will connect at the back, so lots of cross connection in there and ways for everybody to get to the signal, get back out to Ben's Church Boulevard. And with the drive-through configuration, we've, it's, it's unique. You've got the off-site at the top there, not the off-site, but it's out of the parking lot. A lot of times you see the drive-by, the backup in the parking lot, that can cause a problem. Sheets operates 300 of these drive-throughs and with the signage that don't block the drive-by there, they have yet to have anybody report an accident from the drive-through. So it's, it's unique and it works. They've, they've used it a lot. So anyway, with, with all of that, positive staff report, and I don't believe there's any opposition here, we're hoping that you will recommend approval to council. I've got representatives from Sheets and from the developer that would like to speak to you. I will stand by for questions unless you have some right now for me.
Any for him right now?
I have a question.
Yes, Mr. Bryan?
Couple of questions. One, what do you think the status is of this right-of-way that's in front of Sherwin-Williams? What do you stand with a negotiation?
We, we believe we have a deal with the owner to.
You do believe you have it?
Yes, sir. We've, we've done an exhibit and shown them and yes, we feel pretty comfortable that we've got that.
Okay, that's very good. Because looking at that traffic impact analysis statement, I come across something I hadn't seen before, and that goes back to Sweetgrass. Did you see, VDOT give, mention any concern to you about the distance between the Sherwin-Williams light and the one proposed to Sweetgrass main entrance?
We're studying that, but I mean, the, the lights exist, so we would just adjust the lights in front of the Sherwin-Williams site. And if there were, if there were timing concerns, you would retime the signals, but the separation, to the best of my knowledge, is appropriate as is.
And, and that's what I found, it's not. VDOT, they slipped it in there and you can see it for yourself, I think it's on page, well, there were a couple of things VDOT questioned. Number 30, there's a map in there, number 30. VDOT, to calibrate the signal between the light, I suppose to improve the flow of traffic, they were recommending a distance of 1,300 feet. Right now it's barely over 1,000. Did you see that?
Yes, sir, I'm reading it now. But I mean, you've got, you've got these two layouts, Turner exists.
Yes, and, and that's the problem. That's the problem because Sweetgrass has been approved, so there's nothing to do about changing the distance, having them move that entrance. It's too late for that. I don't know if this was mentioned to the county at the time that they was considering Sweetgrass. That's why it's imperative that you have that right-of-way in front of Sherwin-Williams.
And as, as I said, I'm pretty confident we do, and I, I've been doing this a long time and there are policies, standards, recommendations. Frequently, we cannot meet those for one reason or another, and we look at it with VDOT and/or with traffic engineers from the municipality we're in, and sometimes they are less. So they're reading from their, their standards or their policy, and I, I don't doubt that that it says 1,300 feet, but I also have to believe that they also studied the other project and knew that Turner Drive was there and considered that, I'm, I'm not real sure why we're getting a comment again when they reviewed the other one.
Yes.
And approved it.
Yes.
Other than, like I said, 1,300 may be in the book, but this is acceptable, this was what they chose to do. But back to your main point, yeah, fairly confident we're going to get that right turn diesel in there.
Oh, good. I, I think that's imperative. The other thing that VDOT mentioned was, it was in comment number five, they said you're not using the preferred conservative values. I suppose you know what that means. And in number six, it said you used incorrect mythology to calculate pass-by trips. Are you, are you?
We're discussing that with them right now. We are extremely conservative with what we're doing here. That's, that's some of the push and pull. We don't anticipate anything coming out of it other than agreeing upon the numbers and what we have here. Anything coming out of it is we need this improvement or we need that improvement. It's, it's a discussion between engineers about what's appropriate, just, just like distribution of traffic. That can be a discussion. We had a pre-scoping meeting with VDOT and agreed upon all of these things upfront. We executed that. We got comments about additional things, things that were not in the pre-scoping meeting. We addressed them, we submitted it again, we've got different comments again. We're trying to work those out with them, but the bar keeps moving. I'm confident we'll work it out. I'm an engineer, not a traffic engineer, but a land development engineer, but confident we'll work it out. As you said, with the 1,300, sometimes it just doesn't fit and they look at it and say, this is appropriate, this is where we need this here, even though the book says 1,300. They feel obliged to say, the book says 1,300, that's what it's supposed to be, but they approved the, the project with the Turner sign already there.
Yes, which is a little disappointing to me that they just mentioned that now.
But with timings, with, with retiming the signals, that can be worked to, so that you won't have an issue. It will go as smoothly as it can along Ben's Church Road Boulevard, excuse me.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Other questions? For this joint? Okay, you said you had other folks who'd like to speak to us?
Commissioners, Ms. Clark, Jim Sallow, I'm the construction manager for the developer of Interstate Development, 2151 Volunteer Highway Parkway, Bristol, Tennessee. I'm responsible for this team that's before you today to, to get them across the finish line, to enable them to have the tools they need to be successful. And in order to do that, we need to communicate. We want to communicate with you, we want to communicate with landowners, and we want to make this a win-win situation. Not trying to sell any snake oil or anything like that, just wanted to stand and let you know that this is a well-managed project and we want to make sure that it's done right. We have brought Sheets here today to speak to you a little bit about what the expectations that you can see in their development once they come. If I could ask Todd, can you come up?
Welcome. State your name and address for record, please.
Good evening. Todd Casado, 16024 Lost Crop Drive, Mosley, Virginia. Senior Real Estate Market Manager with Sheets Incorporated. Thank you for having us tonight. Thank you for listening in. We never want to assume people know what a Sheets is. We operate just over 780 locations today, but none in this area, so we've decided to move east of Richmond and start to expand into this market, so just wanted to give you a brief presentation on who we are and what we set out to do as an operator. So we're self-made, we are family-owned. Bob Sheets, last name Sheets, he founded us in 1952 with one thing in mind, taking care of people. And we've, you'll see this total customer focus kind of come back up throughout this presentation, but that's really our focus, is being there for the customer. We're a little bit different of a convenience store. Our store is fresh, clean, safe, full of options. We feel like we're redefining convenience. We try to stay ahead of that curve on, on what customers want out of us. We really see ourselves as an ultimate one-stop shop, so convenience store, restaurant, and fuel all at one location. You can see here, here's some pictures of our newest design. We take pride in our finishes and what our stores look like inside. We also have an extensive outdoor and indoor seating area that is just different than a lot of our operators. I know the new Royal Farms has two small tables kind of tucked in the corner. When you come into our store, a, a big portion of our store is dedicated to that restaurant space, so outside of the convenience store, it's really, in addition, we're, we're bringing a lot of food sales through there as well. Here's just some more looks at the finish, coffee bar, order points. Again, just really proud of the inside and outside of our building. Who we are, again, we're family-owned. That's the Sheets family up there. We're on the third generation of family members, very proud to be representing them tonight. Bob Sheets there on the top left, he founded us in 1952, retired in about 1980, but that's all his brothers and siblings and their offspring up there representing the camp. So that's not just a family, that's everyone in the family that works for us. So still take a lot of pride in, in the company and heavily involved in the operations. So what makes us unique is this ultimate combined mission, be in a restaurant and a convenience store all under one roof, gives customers the power of choice. So we have a ton of options. I'm not sure if you're familiar with us, but you can bring your family if you have picky eaters and there's something for everybody. We have a very big menu, so we like to say convenience without compromise. We are 24/7, 365. We take a lot of pride in that, so we're there for your emergency services. If you go by Sheets at 2:00 AM, you'll usually see a pool of police cars or emergency vehicles just sitting around on their break or waiting for their next, next call. So we take a lot of pride in serving those customers. Same if you're getting ready to go fishing at 4:00 AM, 5:00 AM, you need to load up your cooler, get breakfast, lunch. We have all those options all day long. But what really makes us unique is our people and what we call that is our DNA marker. So we always say, hey, anyone can build the same building across the street or offer the same products, but they can't duplicate as our people. So we take a lot of pride in our hiring process. We pay extremely competitive wages, so we're, we're very particular about who works in our stores and how they handle our customers. I won't go through all these. This is, was summarized very well in the staff's report, but just some high level of what, things that we offer that we feel are great. Biggest beverage selection around, lots of options. Another thing we take a lot of pride in is our clean bathrooms. Big bathroom, so you're not waiting in the line, you're not waiting outside a door, and there's actually a Sheets family members note on every bathroom wall that has information on how to contact them, encouraging you to let them know if the bathroom's not clean. So it's just something that we know makes travelers a lot more comfortable, whether you're just traveling for the day, coming through town, whatever it is, something we take a lot of pride in. And again, at the bottom there, you see the unmatched customer service, a total customer focus. It always kind of comes back to that. So that was brought up by Steve Sheets back in the 1980s by talking to customers, and he came up with this mission statement, and it still holds value today. It's still, everything we do revolves around the statement, to provide customers with fast, friendly service and quality products in clean and convenient locations. So we know that's what our customer wants and we keep evolving to stay, keep, keep that happening. We take a lot of value in giving people time back so they can come to us and get a lot of items done in one stop. So that, that's what we really see ourselves setting ours apart from competition. Here's stuff we love to brag about, so we've been recognized nationally with a lot of great awards, so these best workplace awards, those are voted on by our employees, they get randomly surveyed, so that's feedback that our 20,000, 25,000-plus employees are giving these surveys, so it, it's true feedback, but number three best place, best workplace in retail in the country, extremely proud of that. Some other ones up there we're really proud of, and then the bottom one, People Magazine put us in the top 100 of companies that care. So transitioning into that, not only are we asking to be here as a convenience store, restaurant, new to the area, we're going to be in your community outside of just serving customers. We have a charity, internal charity, Sheets for the Kids. We partner with the Salvation Army and we take 16 kids per store from that area. We get their Christmas wish list, our employees go out and shop for them, and we're able to give them a much better holiday than they usually experience. We also partner with the Make-A-Wish Foundation. We do a ton of stuff with Special Olympics, so providing food to their games, providing donations, providing support staff to volunteer, and then another one we're really proud of, Feeding America. So we have a lot of food. As soon as we open up a store here, we'll figure out with your local food banks who can take our extra food and how we can get that in hungry people's hands. So with all that, again, as I mentioned, hopeful for your approval and leave you with a little why the Sheets nod there on your decision. So thank you for your time, hopeful for approval.
Thank you. Thank you.
I do have some engineers, if you have any questions. I know we were talking about the drive-through design and some different things last time, so we brought some other folks from our team, Tony Caruso and Olivia Beck, if anyone has any additional questions.
Great, thank you very much. Planning commission comments or questions?
I have one more question for the applicant.
Mr. Bryan?
Someone who's familiar with the site plan.
I think it's probably me again.
Yes. Back to the, the extension, the road extension. In, in front of Sherwin-Williams, now you're adding a pedestrian path in front of your property, but what about in front of Sherwin-Williams? Would that include a pedestrian path as well?
It's on there, yes, sir.
And it would connect to the one that's proposed at Sweetgrass? Is that an intent?
It will, will go the length of our turn lane as far as we have there. I'm not sure if, if that's going to the edge of the Sherwin-Williams property or not, but I mean, we're extending it along that improvement there. There, there could be a small gap, I, I don't know.
Okay. Thank you. Yes, sir. Real quick while you're there. The Turner Drive light, are you putting in the road there to the depth of your property? You know, where you've got all the turn aisles all the way back to your drive-through? That whole lane back there y'all are constructing?
All the way to the back, yes, sir. Both on that side and the other side.
Okay.
Other questions?
Just, yes, please, just a quick question, Dr. Pope or anybody, long-serving members on the commission. The sign exceptions, and I was just curious about the history of the development of the sign ordinance and if it's an intention to min, I'm, I'm a Sheets fan, but the signage is pretty intense, you know? So if our intention was to kind of minimize some intense signage as you, as we come into town, you know, that, that might be somewhere to, to work on to kind of keep those signs small or minimized. I don't think it'd be very obvious that it's a Sheets, there's no question about that. And then perhaps when we get with, if the. And then perhaps when we get with, if the adjacent property comes through the county and they, when it abuts town property, they generally send it to the town and ask for feedback and we could request a similar request with them if that was the intent of the sign instruction and we want to keep those signs within our standards.
Thank you. Ms. Clary, do you want to address that at all?
I will say, similar to special use permits, the planning commission wanted the flexibility in order to look at projects on their own and decide whether or not they would qualify for an exception.
Thank you.
Yes, but to that, since it's brought that up, one of the reasons for the sign ordinance is to prevent this appearance of clutter along the highways. That's what it's really there for, to restrict that clutter appearance, character, as you're driving along the highways. But in your application, you mentioned a, what do they call that up? An ACM pylon pole? Tell me, what is the height of that?
Next contestant, yes.
What is the proposed height?
Yes, I believe I'm Tony Caruso, one-three-three-zero-two Ellerton Terrace, Middle Oathian, Virginia. I am an entitlement manager with Sheets, Inc. So, I help them, once our real estate team gets items under agreement, then I try to get through the entitlements process and permitting process. So, in terms of your sign, your question about the sign, so a pylon sign would be just essentially metal poles and then ACM, which would just be like a plastic facade where you have it internally illuminated, similar to the way that it's outlined in the proffer there.
But what is the height?
The height would comply with the standard requirements for the county.
Do you have a number, Director Clary, you have a number?
It'd be like fifteen feet is what it's supposed to be.
I believe so.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
And I'm sorry, Mr. Cutler, did you have a specific question about the signage that I could answer?
No.
Okay, thank you though.
Thank you.
I think, are you referring to the fact that they have so many signs on their building and all of that requiring special use permit, that kind of thing? Is that sort of what you were saying? Because normally, unless, geez.
And one other consideration.
Normally, we have sign elevations and everything in front of us when we're looking at signs. And I'm trying to figure out if it's buried in here or if they're really usually separate documents that we look at.
Yeah, the signage on a Sheets is, it is pretty busy, it's pretty in-your-face, I think, or it's apparent. So, that could be minimized a little bit.
Other issues?
Dr. Pope, were you able to find the elevations in the site?
Yeah, I think, you know, because what's happening, what's different, I think, with your building versus what we reviewed before is you have Sheets in several locations. You've got twenty-four-seven in a location, you've got MTO in a location, then you've got a monument sign, and normally we just have a single sign and a monument sign. And you've got lots of signage on here, even though, and so it kind of goes back to what is just excessive signage and what is logo and what is branding. And so, it's, you've got all these different brandings with MTO twenty-four-seven. Your Sheets are on, over the doors on two facades, you've got Sheets on your canopy, on your gas pumps, all of those. And so, all of that is considered our signage, is that correct? And so, all of that is in excess of what we normally review.
Yes, sir.
I think that's the issue. None of it is overly in-your-face or overly enlarged. It's just a lot of separate signage across the property, I think, is the issue with all the special use permits on this.
Yes, sir, and we did a pretty deep dive into the ordinance just to review all the various requirements. So, the special requests for, you know, as it relates to signage were, this, what we presented to you tonight is our brand standard. So, our brand team and our architecture team, we have internal architecture teams that put together what, you know, a Sheets would look like if you were in Virginia or if you were in North Carolina. You know, we would hope that our customer would identify us relatively easily. And the best way to do that is to have a brand standard. So, what you guys have before you tonight is our brand standard. And what we wanted to do was be as transparent as possible and say, this is what we typically ask for, this is what we would typically build. And we compared that to your ordinance and said, you know, this is where we deviate. Certainly, if there's an opportunity to conform a little bit more and maybe not get all of these special exceptions for all the signage requests that we've made, I think there's definitely an opportunity for us to work that out.
Thank you. Anything further for the applicant?
Nothing specific for the applicant, but I just have a discussion item to talk about. So, I've spoken with Mark and Ms. Clary about this, but they're asking for rezoning of the whole property. What makes me a little uncomfortable is the third section that we don't know what's going in there. If this gets rezoned to highway commercial, we don't really have a lot of say what goes on that third parcel. I.e., if they're fully compliant with commercial development, do we end up with another auto zone beside O'Reilly's and beside Advanced Auto? If they meet criteria for their, for their, for their, what's the right word? Their zoning, then we can't really change that, you know? If there's another car wash, another anything that goes in there, and if they meet commercial standards, we don't really have a whole lot of say in being able to block it. So, for me, I don't think, according to Mrs. Clary, we're not able to say we want to do partial rezoning of this property into the three different sections and potentially approve two of the three. So, we have retained some control over the third location. But that makes me uncomfortable of not knowing what goes in there so we don't end up with another use that is not, another commercial use that would not be appropriate. Because if they don't meet the criteria for a special use permit and they have a by right permit, then that's the tough part for me. So, a salute, the way I look at this is, there's two solutions, is ask, can we approve these as two of three and retain the zoning as community conservation of the third lot? Or would the applicant be amenable to using a special use permit no matter the use, if that's illegal or not, because they have by right uses, but allow a special use permit to be used on the third lot for any future development so that we have some say of what actually goes in there so we don't end up with three auto parts store and two dollar stores and everything next to each other? That, that's my only hang-up with this particular property, the way it's presented right now, is what goes on that third property and what say do we have for the future? That's the whole point of community conservation and why it's there, is so that we have some say in what goes here.
Thank you, Dr. Pope. Any further discussion about that?
I agree, I agree with that. I don't know about the approach, which approach is most appropriate, but I agree that, you know, keeping some interest in the third lot is appropriate in light of some other evolutions.
Okay.
Their application is for the whole property. They can modify their application, but you can't, you can either approve it or you can disapprove it, recommend disapproval. They can only do, they can only develop the third lot in accordance with projects that meet the permitted uses, not special uses, but just permitted uses. You know, they could, I don't know, did they exclude any? I don't think they excluded any. They might want to exclude some uses there that maybe, that's, they don't have to. I don't have the zoning one in front of me. But I don't know how you craft a special use permit for a permitted use. That doesn't, I'd have to think about that a long time and I can't give you an opinion right now, right this minute.
I mean, there's ten, twelve, eleven, twelve, twelve permitted uses. Twenty-nine permitted uses. Well, I mean, the criticism we get is, why is there an Advanced Auto and an O'Reilly's? And this is going to be one of those examples of why it happens. It's going to be, give rezoned, commercial establishments will meet all the criteria. We're not going to have any reason to say no or can't say no because it meets all the permitted uses and all the setbacks and everything that goes into it. You end up with stores that are duplicate stores next to duplicate stores. And I'm just trying to protect ourselves from this type of process.
Well, I think we have time to work on this, we could table and perhaps they'll get something else? I don't think there's any rush on it, is there?
You don't have to take action like that.
No, there's no rush, but what they presented and what they proposed, I think is very appropriate. What they've done is appropriate for what they're asking for and the improvements that they've made to the property seem reasonable. They've got to comply, I'm assuming they have to comply with VDOT in order to, in order to get the turn lanes. Turn lane doesn't come in, I'm assuming the project doesn't move forward. But, so I mean, all the stuff that they propose seems very appropriate for the use of the property and what they're doing. I just want to make sure we're protected on the third property, that's all.
If the concern is...
Well, the other two are unknown, correct?
It's a oil express facility for the second parcel, that is the third special use permit. Potentially, if the concern is over advanced auto-type stores or dollar general-type stores, maybe the applicant would be willing to include, exclude those proposed in their, in their proffers?
Yeah, we could certainly do that or come back before you with the third use. We just don't know who the third use is and I wouldn't, I would hope we wouldn't do another, that there's two of already. But we kind of figured if we had another SEP, we're going to have to come back before you anyway. So, if that would put you more at ease, we could add a proffer, as you say, to come back with, even if we don't need a use permit, to come back before you and say, this is what we're proposing here and it's up to your discretion, I mean...
The special use permit is self-explanatory, it's the by right use permits.
Well, that's what I'm saying, even the by right, come back before you when we know who that, that third use is.
Well, that's up to you, I don't think, if I'm getting my legal counsel, I'm not sure I'm allowed to make that recommendation.
Can we offer that? It's something we'll have to work at, Mr. World, I'm not, I'm not saying it's a bad idea, I think it's a good idea. It's the mechanics of doing it all. And if you're asking me how to do that right this minute, I don't think I can give you or them a really good answer to that. I know you want them to vote yes tonight because I'm... Yeah, we're trying to move it forward, absolutely. But I'm just trying to address... There's timelines for, you know, deals being made and people won't hold but so long. But I mean, I can commit to you up here to work with Mr. Riddick. We're going to tweak some of the proffers anyway to make sure we're straight with VDOT per your discussion with them. We could do the same with this third use here, I feel confident that, bring it back before you with even a by right use, that you guys can look at it and say, well, we got five of those already. That's just not appropriate. I would hope we're not going to come up with that as a use, but...
But the other thing that we might need at a meeting that would help facilitate this would have your sign elevations and where you wish, what you wish to do with the monument sign, how your gas sign's going to appear, your diesel sign's going to look. Those weren't part of our packet tonight, just, they were just what was on the building, but they weren't the standalone sign, is that correct?
Correct, the detached sign would have to come back before you for entrance corridor overlay review.
Right, that's requiring any...
Yes, but that would help speed things up for you.
Okay.
So, what's your pleasure, ladies and gentlemen, on the rezoning issue at hand?
I would like to recommend to Town Council rezoning requested and appreciate them coming back with the third establishment when you know.
We'll work with Mr. Riddick. You got to have something better than appreciate.
Well, I don't want to tie them to a third business because that third business may be five years. But some agreement that makes sense, that's legal, I guess, that's what you're asking is, of what commitment we have with future say of what goes there so we don't end up with like businesses beside like businesses. If you have McDonald's and a Hardee's beside itself, you can't help that, I'm not saying that. But how many auto parts stores do we need beside each other?
So, if I could clarify your motion? Maybe it would be a favorable recommendation to Town Council under the condition that an agreement is reached in regards to the potential of that third use, which is included in the proffer statement, along with rectifying and addressing all of VDOT's comments.
Correct, yes.
That covers all, yeah.
So, Ms. Smith, you're making a motion, what she said?
I do.
Good job.
Exactly.
Is there a second?
I would like to hear it again.
Killing me, small creatures.
It's a favorable recommendation on the rezoning to Town Council with the condition that the applicant is working with the town attorney to address the third parcel use. That would be included somehow in the proffer statement that the planning commission would then have the opportunity to potentially review the use and also under the condition that VDOT comments would be addressed prior to Town Council.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Mr. Pope, you got a second?
Second.
Got lots of seconds, okay. Good motion and a second, Ms. Clary, call for the question, please.
Mr. Bryan?
Yes.
Mr. Cutler?
Yes.
Mr. Davidson?
Yes.
Dr. Pope?
Yes.
Vice Chair Smith?
Yes.
And Chairwoman Hillgas.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Next item on this application is a special use permit for a drive-through facility.
Make a recommendation that we approve as presented.
For a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Ms. Clary, call for the question, please.
Just to clarify, it's a favorable recommendation to Council. Mr. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Cutler?
Yes.
Mr. Bryan?
Yes.
Dr. Pope?
Yes.
Vice Chair Smith?
Yes.
And Chairwoman Hillgas.
Yes.
Thank you.
Very good. All right, the second special use permit is a waiver of parking and loading. Requires like to exceed the maximum number of parking spaces allowed by seven spaces. Don't, don't usually get that, they usually want to reduce the number, so...
Make a recommendation to Town Council we approve as presented for the second use permit.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Ms. Clary, call for the question, please.
Dr. Pope?
Yes.
Mr. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Cutler?
Yes.
Mr. Bryan?
Yes.
Vice Chair Smith?
Yes.
And Chairwoman Hillgas.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, we're on a roll. Third special use permit is for a service station. The applicant would like to utilize one parcel as a fifty-five hundred square foot oil express facility. Anything on this item?
I'll make a motion that we approve, or make a recommendation that we, to Town Council, we approve as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Ms. Clary, call for the question, please.
Mr. Davidson?
Yes.
Dr. Pope?
Yes.
Mr. Bryan?
Yes.
Mr. Cutler?
Yes.
Vice Chair Smith?
Yes.
And Chairwoman Hillgas.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, and I think finally, the special sign exception. Two wall signs in the building, twenty-four-seven drive-through and Sheets sign, which is not in front of the street, three canopy signs, and the fuel price sign.
Since this is unlikely to hold up their progression, I would like to hold off on this until all the signs are presented to review at one time.
I agree with that, I like that idea.
Okay, is that a motion, Dr. Pope?
I'm sorry, yes, I'd like to make a motion.
Is that a second, Mr. Pope?
Second.
Very good, okay. Any further discussion?
Would that also landscaping plans be included with that? Would that be all appropriate to look at that all at that same time?
So, the detached sign would require a landscaping plan?
Landscaping plan, yeah.
Yeah, we can show landscaping around that, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, it'll be somewhat conceptual, not, or do you need...
Correct, well...
Just show you the green, not the plant species, right?
Ms. Clary, I don't know what we normally get.
There's a requirement in the square footage of the mulch and then the number of shrubs, but we would not...
Yeah, we'll match all that, absolutely.
And there is a list of recommended plants and trees.
Absolutely.
Yes.
Okay.
There's been a motion and a second to table this item on the sign exception. Any further discussion? Ms. Clary, call for the question, please.
Mr. Bryan?
Yes.
Mr. Cutler?
Yes.
Mr. Davidson?
Yes.
Dr. Pope? Dr. Pope?
Yes.
Vice Chair Smith?
Yes.
Chairwoman Hilligas?
Yes.
Thank you.
I think that's everything.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, item number seven is a, another public hearing for a text amendment about home occupations. If you recall, we heard something about this last month. Uh, Ms. Clary, can we have a staff report, please?
Yes, thank you. Uh, it's a proposed text amendment for home occupations to U-15. Uh, this is removing author, composer, computer programmer, salesperson, and telephone answering service as the home occupations as discussed in our work session.
What, nobody wants to stay to hear that?
I know, I was thinking they brought a whole town.
And the crowd goes wild. All right, this is a public hearing, so we will officially open the public hearing. Anyone signed up to speak? Hearing none, anybody that's here in the audience who'd like to speak on this item? Okay, hearing done, we will close the public hearing, thank you very much. All right, if you recall, last time we talked about removing these items 'cause something was brought to our attention that seemed onerous. So, um, what's your pleasure, ladies and gentlemen?
Nothing strange since our last discussion of this.
Right. The, my only question is about an artist or a sculptor. I think about an artist maybe doing a portrait with a person at their house. But that is not an allowed use, correct?
That would be a home occupation.
That they would need to get a permit for.
If they were in the attached residential or multifamily residential, that would require that special use permit. Um, you could also think of an artist as, you know, um, spray paint or just much larger scale.
It opens it up, yeah, it really does. So, yeah, I, when I was reading over these, I do agree with what we had come to the conclusion last time.
The only other thing when I saw this scratched out from our discussion is salesperson. I don't have a problem with a salesperson working from home that's just working from home. But what happens if you have a salesperson who does have somebody come to the house to pick up something or grab something or do something? Is that different? Because the way I'm reading this is we're allowing, allowing all salespersons. Or is it, are we only allowing salesperson that do not have any type of foot traffic? I can't think of a salesperson because of that, but I don't know what that might entail. But... I don't know if you're a hobbyist and you're an artist and you're selling your paintings or your things and you have people come to the house to pick up your creations, is that, is that appropriate or inappropriate?
Um, so any use which generates traffic to and from the home in excess of what is normally associated with a single-family dwelling should not be permitted as a home occupation.
And that would include a salesperson who has foot traffic then?
So we would inform them that they could not have clients visiting the home.
Okay.
Okay. Any other discussion on this item? Are we ready for a motion?
We'll make a motion that we recommend to town council the text amendment as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Ms. Clary, call for the question, please.
Dr. Pope?
Yes.
Mr. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Bryan?
Yes.
Mr. Cutler?
Yes.
Vice Chair Smith?
Yes.
And Chairwoman Hilligas?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, next item is public hearing, text amendment on multifamily residential. Ms. Clary, is there a staff report?
Yes, thank you, this is a proposed text amendment to Article 3 F of the zoning ordinance. It's just to remove regulations that address attached townhouse and duplex units as according to the M F R, they are subject to A R regulations. Again, this is just to clarify that we would follow the A R zoning district regulations for those proposed units, uh, just to provide clarity.
Okay, this is a public hearing, so we will open the public hearing. Anyone signed up to speak? Anyone in our audience who wishes to speak on this item? Hearing done, we will close the public hearing. Any discussion on this item?
So just to be clear, these are just repeated in two different ordinances and it's removing the repeat. I'm making this motion that we recommend approval as presented.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second, any further discussion? Okay, Ms. Clary, call for the question, please.
Mr. Bryan?
Yes.
Mr. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Cutler?
Yes.
Dr. Pope?
Yes.
Vice Chair Smith?
Yes.
And Chairwoman Hilligas?
Yes.
Thank you.
Great. Moving right along, next item is cluster setbacks. Ms. Clary, you have staff report, please.
Yes, thank you, uh, this is just increasing the side yard setback for the cluster lots from that six feet to the ten feet, thank you.
Okay, I think we had quite a bit of discussion on this, but, um, anybody have anything they wanna say about this? Okay, Chair will entertain a motion.
Make a motion to recommend to town council we approve as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All right, Ms. Clary, call for the question, please.
Mr. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Bryan?
Yes.
Mr. Cutler?
Yes.
Dr. Pope?
Yes.
Vice Chair Smith?
Yes.
And Chairwoman Hilligas?
Yes.
All right, item number ten, text amendment. I don't know, did I open a public hearing? Yeah, I opened a public hearing, yeah. Okay, item number ten, text amendment, duplex definition and regulations. Ms. Clary, is there a staff report?
Yes, thank you, uh, this is the ongoing clarification of the duplexes, which will allow them on either one unit per lot or one duplex unit, which would be two units per lot. Again, we've identified the definition and then we also doubled the square footage and width, thank you.
Okay. If you remember, we spent a lot of time on this.
I didn't.
How could you forget? Any further discussion on this item? Chair will entertain a motion.
Don't be shocked.
This is not a public hearing. But thanks. I, I just hear crickets. Why is everyone so shocked?
I make a motion to approve as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Clary, is there a second?
A favorable recommendation to council.
Pardon me, I make a, I make a motion to make a favorable recommendation to council as presented.
That's what we meant. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, any further discussion on this item? Hearing done, Ms. Clary, you can call for the question, please.
Mr. Bryan?
Yes.
Mr. Cutler?
Yes.
Mr. Davidson?
Yes.
Dr. Pope?
Yes.
Vice Chair Smith?
Yes.
And Chairwoman Hilligas?
Yes.
Very good. All right, our next item is discussion item about Pinewood Heights Industrial Park Overlay District. Ms. Clary, you have anything you wanna say about this?
Yes, thank you, this is our newly created FIFO, Pinewood Heights Industrial Park Overlay District. Uh, the intent is to create this overlay for Pinewood Heights with, uh, the process of this master planning. This would allow applicants easier access in for what we are envisioning for them, specifically, you know, more focus on warehouse storage and contractor yards.
I think this is, uh, reflected in the comp plan, right, that's sort of been the plan all along.
Correct.
Okay. Any discussion?
Only thing I have is like floor area ratio and stuff. Are you allowing for a hundred percent build-out on the property with, when it says not regulated?
Well, it can't be because there's, there's minimal open space requirements. There's a ten percent, uh, required open space. The whole, I, and of course, this has been in the works for a long time, Dr. Pope, because the town has always seen this as potentially an incubator site, really, um, to locate businesses that, um, can't find anywhere else to go. And there's, there's probably real demand for it. And it's taken a long time to get to the end of the acquisition process. But, um, we've got a new water line, a new sewer line out there that's coming in from Surrey and we're gonna have water available, and so it's, the utility piece of the puzzle is a lot, um, it is coming together. And the reason we have such flexibility in this thing is we figured that it's, right now, it's just lots of little lots and, uh, multiple lots. And, and applicants are buying several lots and putting them together. And we kind of, we've been talking about this, we don't think that makes a lot of sense, uh, that the real genius behind this would be able to take end-users and give them what they need and come up with, you know, some people are gonna need smaller lots and you could potentially see, you know, large size lots. And so we really didn't wanna try to put just minimums in there. Um, the maximum's probably not gonna be a problem, but the minimum is where we ran into trouble. And so we were, um, trying to build a lot of flexibility in this. The town owns all the land, with the exception of a few, very few lots over there. And the ones that we don't own are pretty much built out. Um, just alive and good, it's got a facility over there which is very well done. And what we would point to that as being probably the poster child for what we'd like to see over there.
What is the remainder acreage of the area?
Uh, that's a good question, I'm not sure how many acres of this. It's, I, I, more than, more than twenty, I bet it's thirty acres or something. So it's, it's a pretty good size. There's a lot of environmental, um, restrictions around the edges.
Right.
And, you know, there's, there's streets in there that are, that are usable. Real question is gonna be, how do we lay this out? Can we, can we keep any of those improvements? We don't know yet.
Yeah.
Kind of early stage.
So is the, the big picture plan to essentially vacate all the lot lines from single-family?
Probably, yes, and then be able to design, build a suit.
Whatever an applicant needs.
Build a suit, basically.
Yeah, okay.
For lack of a better-
Got you. And what's the current, um, stormwater situation there? Is, is there a B and P there already?
It's my understanding part of the master plan is we would, uh, we would engineer stormwater.
Okay.
But there, there is a, I believe, and we've been discussing this for a long time, there's gonna be a huge demand for this because in, in, and there's nowhere that, well, just take for example, a, a small electrical contractor who has got maybe a couple of vans and he needs a shop and he needs outdoor storage for his, his stuff. There's no place they can go that's-
He needs more than the storage unit.
He needs, and if he's doing it in his backyard and he has a mechanic or a tenant, he's in violation.
He's in violation, yeah.
And he's subject to somebody making a phone call and putting him out of business.
Yeah.
And so we're thinking that there's, that's just an example on the lower end, but then there would be a potential for lots of other types of businesses like that. And I think it's, uh, it's gonna be a, probably a real fentanyl times cap if we can get that done.
I think it's a good opportunity.
What about accessory structures in the front yard will be allowed? Kind of accessory structures are you thinking? Accessory structures may be located in front side and rear yard, so basically wherever you wanna put one. I mean, are you thinking you're gonna put a shed up front? Are you thinking it's gonna be storage bins? Are you, I'm just trying to think what accessory structures would be appropriate for? I would think we would wanna maintain some sort of, even though it's all commercial light industrial, you would think, I would still think we would like to keep it somewhat neat. But I'm trying to think, I mean, Dan Walters where I bought my lawn mower, they had tractors stacked up on the side of the road at four or five high and steel things behind, uh, just a fence. It wasn't the most attractive thing, but it was, it was utilitarian. I don't know, I'm just trying to think, why would we want an accessory structure to be in the front? I don't mind side yard, I don't necessarily mind, but I would imagine, I would think, a lot of these buildings are gonna be pushed close to the road as much as possible because they're probably gonna store behind a fence behind their building. But why would I want an accessory structure in the front? But I'm trying to think if there's other accessory structures I don't know about that I don't, that I can't come up with.
Yeah, I mean, thinking of like the electrical contractor that maybe has bins for their wire and cable and stuff like that. But I, I tend to agree with you, just, we, flexibility is certainly, we, we just, we talked about this for a little bit at the town council retreat. And flexibility in building something or having a facilities opportunity, so to speak, for, uh, some of our, for our working-class contracting folks, uh, that could have a shop. And I think, I agree with you, I think some standards to, you know, look, you know, business in the front, party in the back kind of thing. Uh, yeah, having, having a little bit of standard for the front, accessory structure. And I think, like you said, if somebody had a need, certainly they would ask for it, I'm sure.
Special use permit for front yard, accessory structure, everything else is not right.
I would think that would be like, uh, like filling pumps or something like that. I don't know whether they really qualify as an accessory structure or not, I mean-
Does a, is the shipping container an accessory structure?
They're not, they're not permitted.
I think they are.
They're not, it shouldn't be, it wouldn't be-
Permitted by right as an accessory.
But they're not, they're not, that, that, no, it wouldn't be as an accessory structure.
Well, in the light industrial, heavy industrial, they're about right. Light industrial, that was a special use permit.
Correct.
That's right.
This was designed as an overlay that would trump the light industrial zoning, again, in order to allow flexibility out there just for the Pinewood-
Specific to this parcel, this group of parcel.
So now it defines it as an accessory structure, so you're right, Mr. Cutler, we, you probably don't want, if, if, uh, shipping containers are an accessory structure, probably don't want it in the front yard.
I just think if, if, you know, you envision this as you're driving through this place and the front storefronts, business fronts, you know, are to some standard that's fairly easy to maintain, um, and it's got accessory structure on the side or rear, I would, I would agree with that.
Yeah, I'm in agreement with that as well.
What I do think, for me, you know, I feel about shipping containers, I think they should be a special use permit, still regulated as light industrial. I don't care if they necessarily put it on their lot, I'd just like to know where they're putting it, make sure it's tucked away as much as possible. I'm probably never gonna say no to a light industrial use, but at least wanna have some say into where it goes and they just don't plop it down somewhere.
So the way this zoning ordinance is written, accessory structures are not allowed in the front yard, which is why this overlay would trump that and then allow them? That means that they must be located entirely behind, the entire accessory structure must be located behind the front of the building. Uh, we were envisioning a situation where maybe the accessory structure stuck in to that front yard, not entirely, but again, allowing that flexibility for it to, to be located in the front yard.
But you just can't carve that out? I'm not following, even though it's an overlay, I mean, can you?
Can it be designated?
This would require if the access, the shipping container is not stacked, it's by right. If they wanna stack it, it wouldn't be permitted, I guess you'd have to have a special use permit.
But do we define a shipping container as storage?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's defined as an accessory structure.
But is it storage?
That's typical.
Because the fence, there, there's a, if, if it's storage, then you have a requirement to screen it.
There's, there is a lot of businesses, though, that they might have a nice garage, but they might do all their dirty work, say a fabricator that's doing, you know, laser cutting or something like that, that makes a big mess. So I can, I can totally see it as an accessory structure that somebody, people are working in on the regular, uh, on the site.
I don't have a problem with them putting it in, I would just like to know where they're putting it and have that say as opposed to it's about right, they just come plop it down, you can't do a single thing. You can put it in the side yard, you can bring it all the way up to the front of your building, be behind the front line of your facility and it's in the side yard, you can't do a single thing about it.
It seems, and I, I hear this has been in the works for a long time, but I don't think, I may have, but I don't think that I've seen this. So I'm just curious that we, um, it looks like a good start. Is there feedback from other localities that have industrial parks that, or lessons learned that we've, that we've requested from any of them?
I mean, we could look towards Virginia Beach, which we, we tried, but we also tried to keep it, you know, more Smithfield oriented. Um, but we did look at other industrial areas, however, you know, their industrial areas- However, you know, their industrial areas do not compare to our Pinewood Heights area.
I can check with Steph.
Yeah, I was just thinking of some other small towns that have similar facilities. I've seen them in other places, so.
I'm just thinking things like Rowan Oak Avenue where Marva Made is, Treated Lumber Outlet, the Old Solo Factory down Industrial Boulevard. Obviously, it's very industrial, but it's also very neat on the front facade. The backsides, all bets are off, but the fronts always look nice.
Yeah, what makes me think of a, there is a similar type facility in Virginia Beach where they, you know, they auction tools and stuff, and it is not an appealing place to drive up to. Even.
Some in Chesapeake, too.
Yeah.
I would just like to limit accessory structures in the front yard. I don't care about the side yards in the back, but I do think shipping containers should still be by, like, by a special use permit in the light industrial zone. That would be my two critiques of this.
Okay, is there consensus on that? Someone can step some direction?
But it does say that accessory structures are permitted without a primary building, so then there is no front or backyard.
Well, but if it's a shipping container.
Right.
We have to say, how are you handling this?
So we need a caveat in there that shipping containers will always need a special use permit?
For me, yes. For me, that would be appropriate to know how they're using it, where they're going to put it on the lot, that kind of stuff. Like I said, I probably would never deny it in this location, it's just, I'd just like to know where it's going to be and what's going to happen with it.
I think that's reasonable.
I mean, I'm going to assume any business who's going to go out there is going to put a fence around whatever property they buy. And so this is going to have to go in there. If not, you can't run the risk if you're going to store stuff and it walk off. I mean, you at least have to attempt to secure your facility, I would think. So I think everything that's going to go is going to be inside of the fence, and you would want to know where the shipping container is going to go, or whatever accessory structure they're going to use is going to go within that fence line. I would imagine it would be fenced.
Well, it has to be fenced if there's any outdoor storage.
Is that in there?
And screening, particularly screening fence, not just any fence, it has to be something that's screened, sort of viewed.
Okay. Steph have enough direction to move forward and tweak this, you think?
I have accessory structures not located in the front yard and SUPs for shipping containers.
Anything else, ladies and gentlemen?
All right, I'm going to throw another, I just read about fences. If you want the front yards, if you want these facilities to look nice, do you want to permit fences out in front of the, I mean, that's what is permitted. Fences may be located in the front yard.
I don't think I have a problem, personally, me, I don't have a problem if they put a fence around the whole property and they have gate access to it, as long as it's neatly maintained, however, that needs to happen.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't have a problem with that, but.
Right, because their vehicles could be parked in the front with, you know, monetary supplies in there.
Yeah, it kind of makes me think of the towing company that we recently had, you know, and something like that would probably want to park and have a fence in the front.
Okay.
But to Mr. Bryan's opinion, he was saying, should some of the fencing, at least in the front, be somewhat shielded or presentable or plastic inserts or something?
Exactly, the word is screening. To me, that means not seen, you can't see through it. That's the way I interpret that. I mean, the intent is to conceal it. You can't just do that with a simple fence, you know. It says a screening mechanism.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I just kind of thinking in this case, it's industrial, if they wanted to screen it for their own value, that would make sense, but if it's just to keep people out or keep, you know, stuff in, then.
Doesn't need to be screened.
I'm just thinking, you know, not adding excessive cost if we can avoid it.
Within the towing company, don't they have a insert that they screen their gate with, I mean, just on the front facade, but not on the sides?
Yeah, and junk yards and things like that, salvage yards, you know, usually have things like that, too, so that might be a consideration if we were going to see things like that there. I mean, it seems like there would be situations where it would be appropriate when it would not, so. However, that, if we want to address that.
Just pulled up a picture of the Live and Good property, and they have appropriate fencing and they have accessory structures in their front yard, but it's within the fenced area, which has the inserts, you know, it's like.
And where is that?
Chain linkish kind of fence, but it has the plastic insert, so it's fully screened.
Right.
I feel kind of indifferent about the fence, see-through or not, I mean. Does anybody have any awareness what the difference in cost is? Is it minimal or is it very, very high? I don't know.
Well. Fences can be for security purposes and they don't have to be, they're not screening fences. So you could have, basically this says, if you have outdoor storage, which indicates potentially lots of junk.
Could be junk, could be containers, could be anything.
Loose materials, it could be, you name it.
Could be inventory.
That, this would require that that be screened so that it would look attractive.
Yeah.
To the greatest extent possible. But the fences would, if they extended in front of the building, would not necessarily have to be screening fences, because at that point, they'd be security fences, and you don't care whether people see through or not, because in fact, you probably want them to do.
Yeah, so it can monitor, yeah. Okay. Does that make sense? Everybody ready to move along?
Yep.
Excellent. Our final item is approval of the June 10th, 2025 minutes.
Is that the, do we have that, do we want to look at that discussion item a little quick?
Oh, sorry, we moved you to the end and then I forgot you, I'm sorry. So Ms. Claire has her director's report.
Yes, thank you. We all, I know it's getting late, but we did also include the density tabs, if the planning commissioners would like to have a discussion on density. The only other item I have is the last tab on the PDF. It is a plat for a potential building expansion for a proposed addition for Marvin Smith, which is out there on the corner of Battery Park and Nike Park. He's looking at acquiring some of the property from the Mallory Scott Farm in order to sufficiently fit his, this proposed addition in, within the setbacks. In order to do this, he will have to go through the rezoning process to rezone that Mallory Scott Farm SR portion into that light industrial. And before he begins that endeavor, we just wanted to bring it before Planning Commission to see if Planning Commission was also on board with that.
Is everyone seeing that tab? See the proposed addition?
Does everybody know who Marvin Smith is?
I don't know who he is, but I know we're talking about that.
Cabinet, the Cabinet Company of Virginia, it's right there on Battery Park, when you get to the intersection of Nike Park on the left-hand side.
I've got it.
There's two buildings.
Two more.
The one closest to town is the Cabinet Company, and that's the one he's proposing to do his addition to. And then the one across, there's a big open parking area in between, and then the other crossroad is another office building, Lens Construction.
I was going to say Lens Construction.
I mean, that facility's been there a long, long time.
Yeah.
They're a good local businessman, and he's a good businessman.
Agreed.
He needs some, he needs more space.
And both.
Yeah. I think so. Yeah, that's it.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
So it's a local business looking to expand, I think that's a good thing.
Yeah, I mean, it's, you know, it's, apparently it's land that Mallory Scott doesn't need and he does, and he's looking to expand, but it does, because it's zoned differently, we're going to have to go through that exercise.
Got you.
But it's, he didn't want to go spend his money if anybody's got a hard on about that right now.
Yeah.
No, I think it's appropriate.
I don't think anybody would have a problem with that? Okay, excellent.
With that rezoning, does he have to go through VDOT and things of that nature and spend all this money, or is this just more of an administrative approval that we're looking at this, saying this is reasonable?
It would be more of an administrative, low-key rezoning, because he is expanding his use, we would send it to VDOT if they had any comments. He doesn't, we don't foresee him triggering any sort of.
Is he paying for that or anything, or can we not do that? I just want to make sure we're not spending any more money than we need to, to allow a simple addition.
He would, he would need to pay for it or work out a deal with the Mallory Scott Farm.
One question I would have.
Does VDOT charge you for a?
I don't know, I'm just asking. I just don't want to make him go through a whole bunch of hoops of doing a bunch of stuff that just seems.
This is a boundary line adjustment, really.
Yeah.
But the, if it was zoned similarly, there wouldn't be any rezoning involved at all, but you can't have split zone parcels.
I got it, I just don't want to incur a lot of expense to him if it's unnecessary.
Which is why we wanted to bring it before Planning Commission, before we started the process.
Is he, I'm sorry, go ahead.
My one question is, the entrance to Mallory Point, that will eventually fall under VDOT, right? It's not going to be a privately owned road.
Battery Park Road is not a VDOT.
No, not Battery Park, the entrance.
It would be a town road.
That would be a town road.
Correct.
Would that fall under VDOT jurisdiction as well?
No, the town, the town gets, we're in charge of, we're responsible for maintaining them. VDOT gives us lane allocation, lane mile allocation fund, and we, based on the number of lane miles accepted into the town system, they send us money for maintenance. So it becomes a town street. Unless, unless it's a private street, such as, I think the cottages, is that private? We don't get money for, like, something that's cottages.
Right.
But in a subdivision where it's built to state specifications and accepted by the town, it becomes the town streets, and then we give lane mile allocation money to maintain all the streets in the town.
Yes, but what I'm getting at here is you move that property line, and that leaves 10 feet between the property line and the pavement, the road itself. Is that enough easement or right-of-way required for that VDOT or the town would require?
So for the Mallory plans, they, they're, they've already allocated their right-of-way. That's part of their site plans.
So the 10 feet would be enough?
That is correct. We would make sure that we have enough right-of-way for what we need.
Okay.
Okay. Everybody on board?
One more question, is there anything with the rezoning? As far as I can tell, there's an addition, not a remodeling, nothing's going to trigger an expensive paving, water connection, anything like that? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving forward, the minutes.
I recommend they be approved as presented.
Your second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Excellent, Ms. Claire, call for questions, please.
Mr. Bryan?
Hi, I mean, this is minutes, right?
Minutes, just the minutes, yes.
We're doing this individually? Oh, I thought we did it as groups, yes.
Sometimes we do, sometimes we don't.
Okay, that's why we're here. We did it as a group.
Mr. Cutler?
Yes.
Dr. Pope?
Yes.
Vice Chair Smith?
Yes.
Chair Woodman-Hill-Goss?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Anything else this evening? Then let's adjourn this panel. Thank you for your time and attention.